Good evening, seven o'clock, and I would like to welcome you all to the Village of Webster Workshop, December 5th, 2017. And this evening, we are honored to meet with the town board to discuss the joint water, wastewater treatment plant studies that we both have undertaken and have reports on. And I would like to welcome, this evening Supervisor Ron Nesbit, Councilwoman Patty Cataldi, Councilwoman Alicia Mazza, and Councilman Barry Dean. Welcome. And your attorney, Charles Deci. Welcome. This evening, it is an evening in which we wish to have a discussion between the boards. It is also an evening where the engineers, engineers who put together the study for the town, and also the engineer who involved with the village wastewater treatment study, have an opportunity to present, to talk through things, and we have an opportunity to listen and also to ask questions about the feasibility of what we might be able to do. We're looking, of course, as the town and the village both do at the best interests of both our constituents and Webster's community. So if you bear with us, there is no comment from the audience tonight. If you are here, you are here to listen. This is a discussion that is going on between the boards and the engineers, and those who are sitting to the sides. Okay? Thank you. I would like to introduce them.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to, from the town board's perspective, thank the mayor and the Village Cross T for hosting this meeting tonight, because the town board really does think it is important to both our village and town residents as we talk about infrastructure consolidation of our two sewer treatment plants. Also with me this evening is Commissioner of Public Works for Sewer, our patron is here this evening, our plant operator, Dave Callen, he's here this evening with us also, along with our engineers from Barton and La Jus, there's Pete Baker, and Ken is also here with us tonight. I see Clem is here tonight from O'Fallon, who did your study in Pussel. As you well know, that from Governor Ron Don, there has been a push on shared services for the last two or three years amongst municipalities throughout New York State. The Town of Webster and the Village of Webster are not unfamiliar with shared services. We have agreements to go back to the seventies and the sixties, that we have been sharing services and equipment and trying to help each other out for decades. What we're here tonight to discuss, one of those contracts is the 1979 agreement, shared services with the sewer treatment plant with the town and with the village. The town, as most people know, has a speedies permit with the New York State, and is the town is responsible for that speedies permit. And on occasions, when things go awry, we are the ones that have to be responsible to the D E C. I would like to make it known here, just because I've heard it out in the public, and my board has heard it also, we are not here to talk about consolidation of the town and the village. That's the last thing the Town of Webster wants, last thing I want, or my board wants. This is not about consolidating the town and the village. I want to make that very clear. We have no interest in that. Besides that, that's not something we can do anyhow. Okay? We know that. But I've heard about the streets, as I walk the streets this past year, and it is just not true. This is a consolidation of our two sewer plants, to see if we can save money for our residents of the town and the village, because we're doing redundant things. We're each doing projects that are same, and there is funding out there from New York State that we could use to help us save money. Like I said, it could be a joint project, there's co-funding out there, and I'm going to leave it to Pete now, from Barton and La Jus, to go through PowerPoint presentation from the town's president.
Thank you Supervisor. Again, my name's Pete Baker, I'm here playing with Ken Knudsen, we also have Ryan O'Mara. I'm a project manager for the work that Barton and La Jus has done for the town on the treatment plant. Ken is here, he's the senior vice president for the Water Wastewater Group within Barton and La Jus. I'm based out of Rochester, Barton and La Jus is a, we're a statewide company, I'll get to that in a bit. So, real quick, our objectives are we have to go through the introductions, we wanted to provide a little bit of background on who we are, you know, what the treatment plan is, what the work we've done, discuss the study. The village knows they went through a study on the village's plan, town did the same thing. We want to talk about what the town found, talk about what the current plan of action is with the town. It's actively, we've gone through the study, we are in the process of the design phase, and there's some issues at the treatment plant that didn't need to be addressed, the town's committed to doing it, so we're currently in the process of engaging on the design and then construction in 2018, 2019. So I want to talk about the projects that are happening now and in the future, and then really talk about the main reason we're here, just looking at, you know, what's the, is there an opportunity to kind of bring the plants together for kind of a combined sewage treatment plant? Discuss, we can touch on potential funding opportunities, strategy, and really kind of talk about next steps. Again, I'm going to, I may have the presentation, if anybody, I'm a pretty informal speaker, if anyone has questions during the talk, just feel free to shout it out, and I can certainly, I'll answer those questions. So real quick, Barton and La Jus, we've been around since 1961, we're primarily a company that operates out of New York State, we do have some offices in Pennsylvania and Maryland. We focus on municipal clients, that's a big line share of client help. We do a lot of water wastewater work, a lot of asset renewal projects, funding, you know, with municipal clients, you know, we have a pretty strong practice in funding, exploring funding opportunities and working with clients to identify, you know, they're kind of bringing the money for pretty significant infrastructure projects. We've got a lot of experience with joint projects, so a lot of our recent projects we're seeing statewide is, you know, kind of can bring in consolidation of treatment plants. There's a lot of smaller plants within, that were, you know, pretty much within seventies, nineties, a lot of smaller plants came up, and now the D E C is, you know, those plants are at the point where they're getting old, there's a significant cost required to upgrade them, so there's a lot of, you know, smaller plants are near each other, it makes a lot of sense to bring them together. And again, we've got, you know, water wastewater staff, about 53 engineers. We're based out of Syracuse, we have an office in Rochester, downtown Rochester, I work in downtown Rochester. Ken and Ryan are out of the Syracuse office. So real quick, I think most people here know the background of it, you know, the two treatment plants within, within the Town of Webster, the town's treatment plant, the village's treatment plant, that concept came into fruition in the late seventies. It's unique in New York State, and I'm sure most people here know, it's the only community in New York State that has two treatment plants in the same town. Most in Monroe County, as you know, served by Van Larrick, Frank Van Larrick Treatment Facility. I live in Fairport, you know, all my wastewater goes to, goes there. And the town's treatment plant, they do actually serve a portion, primarily the northern portion of the Town of Penfield, a lot of that flow will go into the town's treatment plant under an I M A. And on the west side of town, Monroe County operates a diversion structure, so its flows pretty much with Bay Road area, that does divert some of the flows that go down to Bay Road, there's a pump station, the Sandbar Pump Station, that conveys some flows to the Monroe County Treatment Plant. So what's kind of unique about the, what happens in Webster, there's two treatment plants, both treatment plants have really similar type treatment processes, and they both provide secondary treatment, but the effluent from the village is conveyed to the town's combined effluent, and at that point, at that point, the effluent from the town combines with the village, that's where the disinfection step happens, so the town's providing that disinfection step for the village's outfall. Within that, that's kind of also unique to the state, because there's a pretty, about a half mile long pipe, an outfall pipe that extends into Lake Ontario, and there was a demonstration project that shows that that town could, the town could meet the residual chlorine standards, using kind of tribal tanks within that pipe. A few years ago, they had to upgrade that pipe, there was a pretty significant cost to the town and the village. So within that, you know, the way it operates is the village is sending some, doing most of treatment in the village's plant. Because there is that final disinfection step going out of the village, there is an I M A replaced in the intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village. So primarily, the primary components here are, is an allocation. The town's speedies permit is permitted for seven and a half million gallons per day. Under that, under that agreement, the village gets about two and a half million gallons per day, and the town's allocated five million gallons per day. Currently, the town is pretty close to that five million gallons per day, the village on average is, I think, a little bit above two, Clem probably would have the number. So really, it's, we're combined plant, we're getting close to that, the permitted, on average, the permitted flows. Again, the town provides the final disinfection. You know, looking at the facilities now, I'll show some pictures, there's a lot of just redundancy within, well, there is redundancy at the town, so the village operates a trickling clarifier, or trickling filter, and secondary clarifiers, and primary clarification. At the town's plant, there's a trickling filter, and there's a fourth secondary clarifier that are operated by the village. They haven't been, the reality is, they have been operating years, they're largely inactive, they're pretty much brought online in an emergency situation, and that's, those are facilities that are currently at the town's, at the town's plant. And so within that I M A, there's a cost sharing, so if the town does upgrades that are, within that I M A, there's certain percentages for different components within the treatment plant, the town, part of that cost is borne by the village. So here's really the, just a real quick overview, again, five, you know, five million gallons per day for the town, two and a half million gallons per day for the village. That provides, within the I M A, what the current distribution of the costs are. Running the village facility, there's a trickling filter at the town's treatment plant. Should the village decide to upgrade that plant, that's pretty much 100% on the village. Anything to do with the outfall, the chlorination system, that's essentially about a third share cost, which is really correlates to the five M G D for the town, and the two and a half M G D for the village. I believe during that work, it was a few years ago, with the upgrade of the outfall, I believe it was roughly a million dollar project, I think the village bore, you know, borne, took a third of that cost on that project. Certain other components, smaller percentages, so a lot of the project we're going to talk about tonight are components that are happening that, you know, from the I M A, there's going to be a cost sharing component with the village under that agreement. Not the, not the, we're not going to talk about the chlorination or the outfall, but some of the other self-flood handling, generation. So just perspective, probably everybody here knows where the plants are, but, you know, this is a map of the Town of, you know, the Town of Webster. The, you know, the town's plant is off of Phillips Road, about a half a mile, it's a lot not less than Lake, from Lake Ontario, this is the outfall pipe I talked about. The village's plant is on, off of Wall Road and 250 in the town road. Obviously, the village system is here, so there's a conveyance lead somewhere through here that gets the flow to the blow stream plant. So, you know, if you look at, this is a photo, you know, we just pulled some images from Google, or kind of look at the similarities of the two, of the two plants. Village plant is on the left, the town plant's on the right. But again, we mentioned the primary treatment for the village, with the standpoint of organic treatment, is offered by the trickling filter here. This is the redundant trickling filter at the town's plant. Secondary clarifiers that the village operates, the town has. Secondary clarifiers here. Primary clarification also. This is the primary clarifiers, the town, the difference on the treatment process is the town utilizes conventional air-based basins, essentially diffusers that blow air through the wastewater. Trickling filters are more of an attached process. They do, they, there are some differences in how they operate. In general, you know, the town's plant's roughly two times bigger than the village's, certainly serves quite a few more parcels. I think in the village, we've identified about 1,100 parcels, a lot of those parts, a lot of those flows is just from Xerox. So the village, according to the, what the village P E R was, does bring in a substantial flow from Xerox. So there is, based on that, Xerox flows essentially, it's industrial wastewater, but it's relatively clean. The villages, the concentration and the quality of the, of the info the village sees is quite a bit, it's a lower strength than what the town currently sees. Here's, now I'm going to really want to kind of jump into, talk about the town's treatment plant, treatment facility. So, just on a larger scale, the two components highlighted in blue represent what the village systems are. The, let me get the phone right in the house here. This is the fourth clarifier mentioned, the town currently operates three secondary clarifiers. This is the trickling filter. In order to get wastewater into the trickling filter, there's a pump station here, flows from the village, enter a separate sewer system, it goes in the pump through here. If for whatever reason the village needed to operate the trickling filter, that pump station would need to convey flows up to the trickling filter, and then down and turn into the fourth clarifier. Currently, nothing here is operable. In order to get the flows into the village, it's the, essentially either replacement of the pump, or I believe the pump motors, in order to get that operational. Trickling filters, one, it does take time to get those operational, it is a biological process that requires a significant food source, so there's typically a steep time involved with that. And the fourth clarifier here, the, and I'm going to get into clarifiers, I bet the village operates either called traveling bridge clarifiers, they're a little bit unique to, they're 1970s type technology, they haven't really served the town well on that end, and we're currently looking at upgrading those. So the fourth clarifier is essentially a fourth, same, same design, that's currently not operable either. So again, we talked about the, you know, we did a preliminary engineering, what we call the P E R, kind of use a lot of acronyms. So with that, just want to kind of go over what we found. And the reason we initially did the P E Rs, the secondary clarifiers, the town operates, they had, they failed, one of the clarifiers failed, I believe in 2015, the traveling bridge mechanism. So there's essentially a large pump that kind of travels back and forth along this, pulls the sludge in, and then discharges sludge into the solids handling facilities. So with that, you know, we identified the fact that we're failing, that we got called in to really look at some options for that. And with that, it kind of turned into, you know, kind of grew into a more of a robust study, looking at all the components in there. The reason we want to do the P E Rs, that's kind of the first stage, looking at what the requirements are for the project, and certainly it's going to be the, really the initial step you need to do to kind of pursue funding with the agencies. Other findings we found is the biological system, that the town operates those diffused aerators, there's certain times of the year where the flows are high in the system that system's designed for. There's certainly 1970s era design, there's some, currently, you know, D E C really requires a lot of redundancy in treatment plants. There's some components here that you go in with the assumption that if something fails, you've got enough capacity in the other components that they're going to be able to provide that treatment. So it goes with blowers, pumps, physical infrastructure, clarifiers, air-based basins, anything like that, you want to make sure that you've got sufficient redundancy in that, in those systems. Key thing that, you know, is backup power, that they have a power, they have backup generator there, it's, pretty much serves the wrong areas, it doesn't provide, so when they have a power outage, the plant goes down. And that's been a kind of hot plug in the D E C, so that's one of the important pieces that we are, we're going to be addressing. Bring up backup power, because within there, because the power system would power the traveling bridges, the, excuse me, the fourth traveling bridge clarifier, and the trickling filter, so I think there's a cost share in there, I think it was about 12% from the village for any upgrades on the, on the backup generators. So, town did receive the notice of violation from the D E C regarding permanent burdens. Pretty much, I think it was a three to four month window, the primary, every constituent which is within their speedies permit, ammonia, biochemical oxygen, man, which essentially is the organics within wastewater, post, phenol solid, phosphorus, they all had exceedances. Some of those were, occur over a couple months, some of those were, I think, in over one month. They also had a capacity issue with, combined flow, I think, in the month of April this year exceeded their monthly average of 7.5. So basically, the N O B is, you know, it's, it's the D E C's first step, to say you have to, you know, you need to do something. It's essentially, if that, you know, N O Bs happen, they go largely ignored, that stuff with the D E C rather, is going to be presented, which really is what the D E C's dictating, what the project is going to be, and there's a specter of anxiety as well. So the option of our, you know, of our study is, we identified the deficiencies, the next stage is looking at what the alternatives are, and, you know, what's the best, what's the most cost effective way to address these. So we've identified, in P E R we put together, kind of identified mostly the liquid and the aqueous phase treatment elements. We didn't look at the solids handling. We also didn't look at disinfection, which I want to, I'll touch on a little bit later, which has since kind of been discussed with the D E C. So, the first stage of the project, we call it Phase One, the capital improvement plan, it's upgraded traveling bridge clarifiers. So these clarifiers within, these rectangular clarifiers essentially are going to be replaced by three 90 foot diameter circular clarifiers. Circular clarifiers are pretty much the, that's the go-to process with secondary clarification. Secondary clarifications, it's an important step, it's the one that removes the solids, it's critical for phosphorus removal, and that's really your polishing step before the final discharge and disinfection step. So we're looking at three 90 foot diameter clarifiers. When we looked at this, the one thing we wanted to make sure is that the village has a fourth clarifier here. We kind of looked at different, you know, different configurations. Currently, you know, we've identified this kind of hashed out area as a fourth clarifier. You know, there's opportunities to move this, this one, quite frankly, comes with a, the village's outfall pipe runs right through there, so the alternative would be, if the village needed to upgrade a clarifier, they could push this off to the west. From a cost and a implementation standpoint, the configuration we have here is pretty ideal for the town, they can come in, install this initial clarifier, get that operable, take this first clarifier offline, this is the one that failed, by the way, so they can construct a second clarifier. Once the two clarifiers are in, they've got the ability, they're pretty much set as far as handling the flows. And then this third clarifier really would take the, you know, take the full footprint of the three town clarifiers there. So, you know, this is a, this is a T B D, and this is certainly something, you know, conceptually, we were looking at clarifiers, so we showed that fourth one on there, there's no plans currently to look at that fourth clarifier. Along with the clarifiers, there's improved, you know, improvements to how they handle solids come at the bottom of it. Prove pumping on the, on what we call the ROAs, the return activated sludge, and the WAS, the waste activated sludge. I've mentioned the new emergency generator as well, and then just upgrading the lights. The lights aren't a necessity, it's certainly something that town operators need, every time the light, they're expensive to operate, and they're expensive to replace. So Phase Two, we talked about, you know, Phase One is really the, you know, Phase One is driven by what's the short-term needs, what do they need to do right now to get, to kind of satisfy the D E C? Phase Two is really that look forward on, you know, what are the current items we've identified, that there are some potential deficiencies, certainly is the town, we're looking for, we're not looking at today, we're looking at a 20-year growth period, that's pretty standard for this. So we looked at, you know, what's the, you know, growth projections within the town, so accordingly, flows are going to go up in the treatment plant, as the town develops, organic growth, just development on, currently primarily to the east and other areas, there's going to need additional capacity. What we did look at in the P E Rs, really just growth within, we, quite frankly, we didn't look at, we didn't look at the flows from the village, we looked at the town, we looked at, you know, growth within that current service area within Penfield as well. So there's, you know, there's certainly capacity upgrades necessary for just the town flows at this point. So the second phase, cost-wise, is, you know, we project a slightly less than the first phase. I didn't mention the cost, it's about 9.5 million for Phase One on that. The upgrades here would be, the, kind of the neat thing is, with the aerated basins here, currently they operate with just, they're built public in there for wastewater. We're going to incorporate attached float process, so there's plastic media we would add. We don't need to add any additional tanks for the clarification stuff. And then the primary clarifiers, they have three that actually function, they're traveling bridges, similar to this, they've been okay operational-wise, they do a great job pulling, pulling a lot of the organic solids up, but from standpoint of growth, we need that fourth clarifier there, on long-term. Final piece is, here we go. The final piece that we've proposed is a, in the headworks, there's what we call a grit removal chamber, it just removes the sand, the grit, the heavy solids. Town currently only operates one, if that, if that system goes down, they bypass, that grit makes it this way into the, into the primary clarifiers. That's critical for two reasons, number one, there's no redundancy, so the D E C is really going to, you know, focus on, they want to have, to make sure if something goes offline, we're able to keep operating. And second, the process being proposed for the attached float process, pretty critical to get a lot of those heavy solids down there. So, we mentioned the Phase One cost, the 9.4, roughly 9.5 million dollars, based on the current I M A and the specific components we're looking at, there's an estimated $93,000 contribution from the village, primarily within the ROAs, WAS pumping, and the cost component, or the cost contribution to the generators. So what we looked at is, you know, within this, we have the cost, now how are we going to pay for it? You know, so the first step is looking, we just looked at a different, a bunch of different options. So, the town currently has some reserves, so the baseline option would be essentially the worst case, the town just jumps into it, prepares a bond, and then kind of looks at that long-term projection. We assume local financing, the town's got pretty good, their rates is pretty competitive with what they've got with the E F C. And then we looked at some scenarios with, you know, ranging from, the town provides a contribution from their reserves, they provide a contribution, and then, you know, a grant, we're successful in getting a grant. First one would be in 2017, New York State Department of Facilities Corporation came out with the WEA grant, the WEA grant, the I M G grant, the WEA grant payable at 25% of the I M G grant here, which is an intermunicipal grant, that payable 40%. So within that, you know, we ran these numbers, we kind of looked at the I M G, is there potential, quite frankly, to come up with Penfield, if that would, if that would look at that, because Penfield is, does have a cost share with that. The reality is that, I'm not sure if that would be conceived as, a lot of towns just bring sewage in. We think, you know, with, for the discussions, that that potential there, I'll talk about over later, is with the town and the village. So that's, you know, kind of some of the scenarios we looked at, I mean, the key is, we're looking at that services, or, I believe that was over 30 years, and then, you know, what the, what the range and increased cost would be, based on these scenarios, to the equivalent drawing, you know, should be used within the town. So right now, I mentioned, you know, we're moving forward on Phase One, we want to get shovel ready. We did apply for WEA grant in 2017, didn't get it. The WEA grant came in pretty late, we scrambled, we moved the town, just wasn't under the project scores at 26 within the E S, so it's not, the project in and of itself didn't score very high, through a variety factors. But that being said, it's, you know, the town is moving forward on this project. So we're in basically the stages of doing the final design, we're looking at business project in spring 2018, we're going to reapply for the WEA funding, and, you know, we're looking at shovel ready and breaking ground, and really, I think, you know, late spring, summer of 2018, for installation of three clarifiers, upgrade the back rope generator, and the other components. upgraded back rope generator, and the other components. So now, Phase Two, we touched on what we contemplate as Phase Two project, but that's really why we're here, because that's, we've, we've got a piece in that's, that can certainly fit, there's a puzzle to put together, the next pieces can easily fit in, should the town, you know, should there be an opportunity to provide even more flow? If the village could combine flows, there's ample room within the footprint that that could happen. So, you know, the general concept is, I explained this earlier, but now this is currently on the left, this is what's happening. We've got the village wastewater, they treat it, they send it down to the effluent pipe with the, with the town. Town Penn Field wastewater gets treated, the village, they get combined here, discharged to be the speedies outflow, that's the point where disinfection happens for both effuents. You know, the joint concept is the village wastewater gets conveyed to the town along with the town Penn Field. You know, there's some upgrades obviously necessary, above beyond what we, what we contemplated, and they haven't been, they haven't been evaluated yet. They haven't, you know, qualitatively, we have a general sense of what that may look like, but certainly there's a more detailed evaluation that's, that's necessary to really understand what's that step going to be. And then ultimately, they're combined into the outflow. You know, I think there's, you know, our perspective is there's a lot of opportunities there. You know, shared services, consolidation is, is obviously a buzzword. Just from my perspective on it, as the engineer, I think there are a lot of technical benefits to it, and when I say technical, it's, it's how the efficient the plant operates, it's ultimately how cost effective this is going to be to operate the plant. So there's lots of done in infrastructure. You essentially have one town, now you've got one town, one plant versus one town, two treatment plants. You know, we believe there'd be a capital cost savings, both these projects, if the village pursued their upgrades and the, and the town pursued their, their upgrades, they're both significant capital projects. So there's certainly, you're paying to contractors, you're paying, you know, contractors immobilized to two different sites, there's certainly a cost in just economies of scale. The more, the bigger the project, the lower the, the net unit cost is going to be. Certainly, there's going to be savings with how plants operate, you know, the energy labor, chemical, chemical usage. It's, it's going to be cheaper, you know, you're going to use less chemicals treating all the flow in one plant versus the chemicals you would use in two different plants. You know, again, it's a larger project, you know, that, that concept of two plants coming together is, that's, that's the new buzzword, and that's really where the agencies are looking at. You know, there's the opportunities for the, the intermunicipal grants that are out there. You know, from the environment, I talked about this one last, but quite frankly, this is probably the most important, it's just it's reduced risk to liability, speeds compliant. So as, you know, supervisor and as has been mentioned earlier, you know, there is an N O B, and that, you know, if those N O Bs are, are not addressed, the next step is going to be more, you know, consent order possibly with, with the D E C. So there's really a, you know, a concern on the town's point that, you know, they want to be able to control, I think that's a core term, but they want to be able to, you know, one outflow where they combine influence. So really, there's no, there's a complete understanding, there is an upset in the plan, the operators at the plant know exactly what's going on. Now you have to look at what happened, which plan really were the, what's your potential upside? You know, within the I M A, there's, you know, there's a product structure that's generally been defined already as far as what the contributions would be on, on the upgrades. This is, you know, this is purely conceptual, so really, this is our, this is our typical slide talking about the project in general. So really, it's, you know, we define, define the joint, what are the needs and the goals for both the village and the town to come together? And really, what we look at, the joint's completed P E R, we've completed P E R, and we think most of that data is there, that you can really, it's kind of take a hard, a good hard look at what the, you know, what are, what are possible, I'll call it, you know, from the village's perspective, look at three alternatives, you know, maybe fourth alternative. We looked at unit, you know, kind of our study was structured a little bit differently, we looked at process by process alternatives, but again, it's, we look at an amendment of the, you know, P E Rs that we developed to look at, you know, what the blended flows are, what are the, what are the possible upgrades needed for the town's treatment, for the town's headworks, primary clarification, all those subsequent treatment steps. We'll, you know, develop cost estimates for that, that's the key thing, because ultimately, what's, what's this project going to cost, and is it going to be more cost effective for everybody? You know, and then, and then P E R defines the next step, which is really what's the, you know, what's the process to get the project off the ground? Going through the environmental reviews, the, you know, basically the required resolutions, certainly being, you know, for a project like this, there'd have to be some updates to the I M A in place. And then, you know, update, now we're trying to list it, so we're going to update on the C E V S R F I, I P list, and then go through that, you know, so now we're in the next steps along these stages here. You know, look at, we're going to modify the secret processes that were done for both plants, it's a new project. Go through the, go through that represent environmental review process, look at the I M As, you know, develop the map and plan, and essentially what you'd have is, I guess I would probably look at, probably potentially combine sort of district, where all those, all those flows are going to one treatment plant. Public hearing bond resolutions. You know, the, the goal is that, you know, the I M As came up in 2017, about June, you know, late June. So that's really what we're looking for. I think the difference here is, you know, the town applied for a WEA grant, which was upgrades for their infrastructure. I, I think the big, you know, the big ticket there is, is the I M G grant. That's payable at 40% versus the WEA grant's payable 25%. I think this is my last slide. Really quickly, this is a, you know, criteria when we, we do a lot of these funding studies, you know, we look at, there's, there's a lot of components that we're looking at, it's not just how much money do you need, you know, the, the agencies are looking at, you know, a lot of components with that. What's the M H I, the mean household income, population? So there's really, you know, within the M H Is, the village has a lower M H I, consolidated project would be more beneficial as far as a, from a grant perspective, it would create a lower M H I, certainly a larger service area as well. A couple other things to note is phosphorus, you know, the town did have exceedances with phosphorus. And Lake Ontario, or the Ronquay Creek is, you know, on the priority, or the D C priority water body list for that. So certainly there's, you know, it's been identified, it, it does discharge an impaired water body, you know, there's additionally, you know, possible funding, other agencies available for that? Do you want to share anymore? I don't think you really did a good job.
No, I think we discussed this way back when at an earlier meeting that I think the village attended, and again, we're just kind of looking at this as a fundability assessment. As we talked about, and as your demographic show, working together increases your funding opportunities, pretty much what this slide indicates.
So here's the, you know, here's just kind of an overview. Before, you know, this is similar to what I had early on in the process, in the presentation, kind of, you know, the town, what I pointed out is really the town kind of thinking about this, and the hope is that now it's the town and the village kind of looking at, you know, what are those, you know, what are those funding opportunities there coming together? So real quick overview, and I, we have hard copies of presentations, so I'll provide the boards with copies of the presentation, and I can certainly email anything as well. So I'll post it, that's, that's, we can, you know, get that information to you as well. So, you know, an overview of the WEA grants and the I M G grants. Certainly, they haven't been announced for 2018 yet, there's a substantial amount of funding that was, was available, so we anticipate something along similar lines this year as well. Thank you. So I think at that point, I, you know, any questions we, you have, myself, Catherine, town or village board?
I'd just like to point out on the notice of violation that we had, we had a meeting a couple of months ago with Jake and Mr. Carville and my team. And these things come up every once in a while with ammonia and total suspended solids, and we're testing every day, and the village is sending out to a third party to test. We get in a room with one fingers at each other, okay, who did what and why? Okay? And this just continues to go on, you know, nobody's blaming the village, the village is blaming the town, but we got these spikes happening and why and how come? But the town has a speedies permit, and we're the ones responsible for it, and the D E C is going to find us. Not only that, and I don't want to go into a long subject here, every town board meeting, I have the neighbors down there at the town board meeting yelling and screaming at the town, because we got to do something about the smell coming from the village. Okay? This is going on and on and on, and I'm not going to get into it, everybody's aware of what's going on. But I don't have answers for those people. Town board doesn't have answers for those people. I sit there like, I don't know what, what am I supposed to tell them anymore? What am I supposed to tell them? It's getting frustrating for us, okay? It's not our plan, we didn't do anything, yet they're coming to us for solutions. And I understand all the legal things that are going on here and everything, but, you know, it's a real problem going down the road, and what we're trying to offer is a, is a solution here, that we could work together on a study, at least try the study, let's do the study, you know, and see if we can come up with an answer to save us all money. One of the other points I had here was, Pete mentioned that the outfall pipe, that was a million dollars. Did the village had to pay 300,000 for it back in 2012? And you bonded 800,000. So village residents right now in their tax towers are paying for that 300,000 dollars, I guess it's a 20-year bond, they're already paying for that. They're already paying for that outfall pipe for the next 20 years. So now you add on the 93,000 that you're going to owe the town for Phase One, and then what else you're going to owe us for Phase Two? And then the 4.8, I think that's the number that LeBeau might have come up with for yours. Start looking at all those numbers you're going to put on the village, the back of the village residents, where we can do this jointly. So I'm looking at all these numbers, okay? Because, I mean, the 300,000 is there, that was a third of the million bucks, and village residents, whether they know it or not, are already paying for that. That was in, in that 800,000 dollar bond that was taken out in 2012. Okay? Now we got another 93,000 coming, and then we got Phase Two, and it hasn't been figured out yet how much more, but that's going, that's going to be additional cost to the village residents as we go far, whereas if we were to combine this whole thing, maybe we could save some costs for everybody, and at least do the study. Let's find out.
I have a question on the Page Two, however, the 93, I do know that has to do with probably the generator for the chlorination, is that correct for Part One, Phase One?
It says in the I M A it's a backup generation, doesn't necessarily, there's a, there is a cost for chlorination, which I think is 30.
Well, we do that now, but I mean the backup generator, where they need to go when they're.
That's, that's for the facility, that's for the facility. So should the, the village be operating the, so whatever, it was an upset of the village plant, and they, and they queued up the trickling filter and the fourth clarifier, there, there's a pump, so there's, there's a pump, there's blowers to go with that. So that power would be, now, now fits the scenario, and then the next worst-case scenario is the power goes out, that's what backup generator will be, the town and the villages.
So my question for you in terms of Phase Two, is Phase Two cost to the village? Would that involve upgrades if we send material our, our sort to the town? Or if we are keeping it ourselves and we're running it through our plant, we don't need any upgrade that's there, that plant for Phase Two? Is that correct or not correct?
There are certain components, and I think some of those we, we touch on with those kind of chlorination, I think there's equipment controls, that some of those have a slightly higher percentage. I'm trying to work my way back to what, kind of the overview of the I M A.
I mean, the 100%, that was the redundancy when they built the trickling filter, they built all that stuff, that's long gone, that was 1979. Now, if that's renovated or put back in, into operation, that becomes the cost to the village. So my question is, okay, maybe it's not cost effective to do that. So in Phase Two, sending, and that's maybe where the study comes. Maybe that's where the study comes, in terms of what is the cost should the village send their sewage to the town? And then what in Phase Two would you need to do for Penfield?
Sure, and that, that would be really, that's, you look at, you know, the increased flows. So certainly that, you know, the town has what their, you know, so the village's flows, and I, I'm just correct if I'm wrong, I think it's currently about 2.1, and I think you projected like a peak.
The max, maximum.
Okay, so max month 2.1. I think the peak flow they projected is 7.2 million gallons per day. The town's peak flow is 16.3 million, this is the 20-year planning period, the town's peak flow is 16.3 million gallons per day. So collectively, it's about 23 million gallon per day, and as a peak hourly flow, they don't, you know, neither plant sees neither of those flows, except when it's raining or except when they have, you know, so there are times when they do see those. That's really the design point for most of these units you need to look at. So again, it's, we're, we're looking at a lot of upgrades. I think, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Maybe if I get, let's step in on the I M A typically, so the engineering report will look at the unit processes and identify what's needed to increase the capacity for build out the town, accepting the village, and then build out in the Penn Field. They would also look at this, and with this joint configuration, my guess is this I M A would be superseded by a new I M A that would typically allocate costs based on flow and load or E D Us within the town Webster, the village Webster, and the town Penn Field. So there would likely be two I M As between the town and the village, and then the town and the town, that would collectively identify cost sharing of the capital costs in addition to future annual operations and maintenance. So the I M A that was in that spreadsheet, basically, you're sitting down from scratch, working with funding programs, working with boards, to come up with a new I M A that pretty much outlines the cost sharing and the series of how this plan, joint plan will run in the future.
Yeah, I mean, the current I M A does, it is pretty specific to the, the configuration that was determined in 1970, the late 70s, when the two treatment plants come together. So the language in there is very specific to treatment, village treatment facilities, town treatment facilities. The town currently has an I M A with Penn Field. That's more what count in the classic I M A of really defined by E D Us, that type of thing, where it's, it's, I guess that's why I would envision that would look like is more of a, you know, not necessarily of a cautionary, if you have to do this or that, it's really based on flow, you know, how much of that flow are you going to pay off of?
You know, right now, you're only using pieces of the plant, you take that line, and then now you're coming with raw, raw sewage, you're using 100% of the plant, therefore 100% of the benefit of the infrastructure. And typically, again, if, if you've got municipalities here that are working together, whereas the town has the plant, they've got a big user base, but their M H I's a little higher, the village has a smaller user base, but you have the lower M H I. So you typically look at a blended M H I. The village brings the benefit of that. So when you come together at the table, a unit is a unit is a unit, there's no surcharge, everybody's treated as, treated equally. Basically, you're dropping your corporate boundaries to make this work, and that's structured in the I M A.
Just a question if I can, the, if there was arrangement short of combining the systems, the project, like it was done in 78, 79, I think it was 78, 79 there, where it was one construction project, but at two different plants, you say, would the economies of, and some of the economies of scale would still work on it, but with the funding mechanisms that are available, be able to be applied to a situation like that?
I wouldn't think so, because again, now you're building redundant infrastructure at both locations, it's not.
I thought that's what the D E C required, is redundant.
While you're building, basically reconstructing two separate plants, you're not consolidating one, you're not consolidating your infrastructure as a superbigger program.
One of the things in the study too, I was looking at, the E D Us, it's based on 216 gallons per day, which is about 78,000, almost 79,000 gallons currently. I think the E D Us are figured at 60,000 gallons, is that right? It's about a 30% difference, so is the, when that was calculated, did they use the current 60,000 gallons per E D U, or is it, you know, 216? Seems like might be off balance, same.
60, I'm sorry, 60.
60,000 gallons a year.
In your water consumption, with your water.
Yearly consumption.
We looked at, I mean, basically, we looked at collectively the flow, you know, what's the flow going into the, into the treatment plant? And we broke it down based on, so really ultimately was, what's the flow, what's the parcels, what's the population base? So it was essentially, you went to the total flow at the top, the denominator was the, you know, number of parcels and the census data. So, quite, you know, in our study, there are, you know, we estimated, we knew with the service area in Webster, when we got in Penn Field, and certainly we got, you know, kind of that diversion structure. There's some, there's some estimates made, but they're, they're not real accurate. So, I mean, certainly the flows going in are projected are good. The E D Us, you know, the kind of fact check is that we came up with 260 gallons per day per E D U, 200, 250 is our, kind of our industry rule of thumb, or something like that.
And that includes any inflow and infiltration too, if we are. And that includes any inflow and infiltration too, if we are backing into it from the flow to the reach of the plant?
Okay.
On an annual average.
And one of the things you talked about is the efficiency of the plant. In your study, did you consider a trickling filter plant for a town if there's an upgrade? Because it's considerably less electricity and operational costs than a air activated sledge plant. You point the recirculation pumps going out, trickling filter, not the blowers and all the solids handling, and waste activated sledge and the return sledge and...
Well, we didn't, the one, the infrastructure there with the trickling filter in place, because it was really kind of village, we didn't wanna take it, claim it, I guess, from that standpoint. And we've got existing, like for on the aeration process, we've got existing infrastructure that's there already. So instead of kind of going through and repurposing those, the plant currently runs, it runs via gravity. So there's really no pumping or anything like that. So that, we really looked at what they have now works, but just there's times when it's under capacity. So what we looked at is that, you know, some of the issues, they do a great job treating BOD. Phormonia, it's really, you know, our incorporated is kind of, we're called IFES process. It's the plastic media. So it is essentially, it's still a pretty similar process to trickling filter. It's an attached growth process, but it's more of the, you know, they're more in suspension, you know, so it's still a diffuse, it's still, tanks look the same, you're adding that media. Versus a trickling filter where it's, you know, you pump it up and trickling filter down, so. I mean, we did, you know, we didn't look at every option on that one, but we looked at the ones we thought made the most sense from the standpoint of what the current, they current have and what we do to upgrade that, you know, kind of minimize what we need to do to rip out existing infrastructure in place. Because we, again, it's a town of sixty thousand people that we need to keep serving too. So the options we look at are certainly keeps the plant rolling as well, so.
I have a couple of questions. On phase two, is when you look to implement the upgrades to the aeration system? Was there any consideration to the additional sludge that might be created for enhanced nutrient removal? And is that, I don't know if you've evaluated the solid handling. That's one of the things, you know, when we looked through, when we're looking at the cost for the village potentially, just, you know, just the...
So one thing, yeah, and I, just a, it's a great question. So we looked at, you know, really the town has, you know, looked at, they know they have issues really with the liquid treatment components of the plan. They did a fairly recent upgrade of the solids handling. It certainly is, you know, so that was a, not, we looked at, it wasn't an immediate need. So really trying to address what they understood as immediate needs. That's, you know, that being said, it's, as more flow goes into the town, there, you know, we want to certainly look at that too. And again, with, you know, with the current process, we have just organic growth, and it's slow growth. They're gonna have time, they're gonna understand these issues come to play. With, if the village were to, you know, basically provide, so there's a, instead of kind of building up to those flows, now you've got an instant, you know, now you've got two million gallons per day. So it's a different, it is a different equation on solids handling. Right now, the plan keeps up with it. That being said, it's, you know, down the road, are they gonna need to look at solids? Certainly. And certainly with the village tie-in, it's a whole different, it's a whole different equation on that end.
Any other question I had is kind of related to the existing structure in the IMA? So, you know, the timeline showed that with the town and the village signing a new IMA, new IMA, as Ken said, which makes a lot of sense, could be more based upon flow and loading, which something's more equitable distribution of that. But a lot of, essentially what's there right now was driven back in the day by DUC. So the fact that we have a redundant treatment facility essentially in the town site is a requirement of DUC for that time. Has the town had any conversations with DUC about whether that is a requirement that they all rescind now? Because, you know, we've had twenty, thirty years that that's not been used, and so it's obvious there's no, there hasn't been an issue over the last twenty, thirty years of needing that redundancy at the town site. Because obviously, that would free up a lot of land and space for the town that ever needed to do upgrades, regardless of what projects were...
I mean, we have, so when we kicked in kind of our first day down the design project, phase one, we had me with DUC, just to kind of give them, the timing worked out that it was also timing when the NOB was being discussed between the town and DUC. So, you know, we talked about those projects, and, you know, I have some faith that the DUC would support any type of project where they essentially have one outfall to regulate. You know, right now, they have a, if, you know, there is supervisor, but when these issues come up, there's discussions between the village and the town. You know, those, the DUC really can only regulate the town. They've kind of indicated that verbally, that they don't have a whole lot of, they don't have a big hammer on the village. So they, they're looking at the town to really regulate the village. That's a tough, that's a tough spot for, I think, everybody here can agree that, you know, it's certainly, everybody lives in, I'm just, I'm from Webster, so I got a pretty vested interest in this. Everybody, you know, wants, wants, nobody wants to hurt their neighbor. But it is certainly, it is a tough, a tough position. So if the DUC has one facility to regulate, that's really where they, you know, they, you know, if something goes wrong, they want to be able to point the finger to, you know, to the one organization, and not, you have those questions that are kind of lingering in the background as well.
The flip side of that equation though, is if the village and the town didn't do a joint project and continued down the path of upgrading their own facilities, would the DUC still require the village to have redundant facilities at the town facility, at the site?
Our guess is, you know, looking at the village's plant right now, and the size of it, that there should be two trickle filters there now. So if there were any upgrades made to your biological process, you'd probably have to add a second filter to be compliant with current design standards versus having this separate train. That would be my guess, as to what the DUC would require.
Yeah, because I mean, it's, you still, you're pumping once, and by clarifying it drains down, you gotta pump again. And to see those trickle filters, it's not a, it's not a, turn the, turn the flip, switch on and it runs. It's, I would imagine, a few months to kind of get those things truly seated.
Right. That's why I don't, it doesn't seem logical to me that it's a redundancy step, because it's not like you could address an immediate issue if it overwhelmed an existing village facility.
Yes, well, we talk about redundancy, I guess, you know, for the clarifiers we talked about. We have three clarifiers, and I think when I first met with the town, you know, they looked at, you know, one of the questions that the board members had is six, where you come up with sixteen point three million gallons per day? That's kind of their projected flow, but really you're looking at, you know, what happens when, you know, one of those clarifiers is off? Can that clarifier handle those, you know, those conditions? And that's really when we talk redundancy, so if you had one, as you know, if you had one clarifier, and that clarifier goes down, you have no, you have no ability to move solids. So that's really that redundancy. So when we look at, you know, three clarifiers in parallel, when you look at the area of basins, which are essentially three individual basins, they can take a basin down during dry weather flow, do whatever maintenance they need to be, and they still got that ability. So that's where, having multiple units, that's, I guess, when I talk redundancy, that's two, two pieces of equipment or two treatment processes that are right there that the operator can, there's some, certainly some logistics on having to turn one from the village or the town's plan on that end.
So we, just to untell on that, so we have three primary clarifiers as well. So if one went down, we still have two. We have two digestive, one has gone down between the inside of it.
Sure, yeah, that's, I guess that's all.
No other redundancies you're talking about.
Sure, absolutely. It's the trickle filter going down, which is kind of what we do, that's, it really is not building to treat the organics.
I have a question on, you're talking about a study. Is that, is there state funding for a study? Are we combining in terms of money for a study? How quickly can the study be done? Those are questions that I would ask, looking at two thousand and eighteen, June, I remember last year.
Yeah, so, you know, if the municipalities submitted anything under the recent CFA back in, by July twenty-ninth, the awards for that grant round are supposed to be coming out here on December thirteenth. The next cycle, if it follows years past, is gonna open in May, and the CFA applications, which would include an engineering planning grant, which is probably what we would use here. Those would be due by July of twenty eighteen, and you would be here in about a year from now. So that, you know, each municipality is paid for a preliminary engineering report. As Pete said, both village engineer and us have all this data that is readily available now. So there's, right there, there's some economy of scale based on what you've done to take a look at this, basically a fourth alternative under a joint project. So it would be advantageous to move this along, only because looking ahead, you wanna see if you have a viable project here. Put yourself in line for CFA funding or a joint application for the CFA in twenty eighteen. Get yourself on the funding list with the EFC, and get this thing in queue for funding a sewage account. Doing the study now would pay dividends.
Tom is willing to share with the village in that study?
Ken, for the IMG grant, is having a executive IMA a prerequisite for application?
And seeker and bond resolution, which, for a joint project of this size to do all that, you know, the town hustled to do seeker and already had the IMA in place with Penn Field under the recent WE application to take a joint project like this through study phase and the associated IMA and seeker and bond resolutions by the end of June, the IMG grant is probably pretty impossible.
So what's the time, what's the timeframe for the study and estimated cost of the study?
I would say a couple of months realistically from authorization, because there'd be some workshops in there between, you know, the jumps, joint workshops between the town and the village along the way, and the engineers working together. Draft report, presentation, comments, your two to three months at least to final report.
What's the cost of that study for the project?
I don't know. I mean, a typical funding agency compliant, PER, they give thirty thousand dollars, plus a twenty percent match. So thirty-six, thirty-six thousand dollars is the typical starting point for a PER. I would say something like this, with the additional solids handling that has to be looked at, you're probably in the twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range to take a hard look at this, life cycle costs, plus all the, you know, the engagement of the boards and all that.
One of the questions I had asked at our last meeting was that, because of the studies that have been done, we already have a lot of the information that you need to put into this study. So that would help us contain the cost of that, would you assume?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, just the fact that the studies have been done, so these are almost, I guess we're kind of looking at almost in a method too, as opposed to brand the study, a lot of the, you know, additional, some of the requirements are looking at the, looking at the treatment system. We've already done that, you know, LeBeau's already done it, the village has done it. So those assessments have been completed, so a lot of legwork's been completed.
You would have to look at, you know, converting the village plant, you know, partial demolition of the village plant, converting to a pump station, now getting that to the town's plan, and then the town would have to look at each of the unit process with the increased flow loads that are happening for village.
The other question that was asked was whether the IMA had to be in place for this grant application. You said yes, correct?
For an IMG.
So what if, what if the funding doesn't come through? Are we bound to that IMA?
Well, I think one of the questions that we would ask the funding agency in the DUC right up front is, since the village and the town already have an IMA in place, could you execute what's called a memorandum of understanding that outline how you would envision your current IMA being modified under a joint project? And then submit your current IMA with an MOU for, for a WE grant and an IMG? Because it's gonna take some time, I am rather eager to have an IMA before we prepare to report if it turns out to be of the best interest of the joint project.
Forgive me with the, there's a lot of background, the IMG, are any of these grants, are they grants in a traditional sense where there's money that's, for lack of a better term, given or given back to the communities? Or are these grants in the form of low interest loans or zero interest loans? Or are they true grants where they would reduce the project cost? The upfront project cost, not, you know, not the long-term financing and things like that? I mean, if it was a sixteen million dollar project you're talking about, could you get a grant for four million dollars of that and reduce it down to twelve? Or would you get just financing, favorable financing terms, as that grant is?
Yes, so they each refer to a net project cost. So, you know, we talk about this co-funding. Let's say you have a ten million dollar project, and the WE grant pays up to twenty-five percent of the net project cost. If there's, if there's no other grant awarded, and you were successful in getting the WE grant, that would take two point five million off of the ten. And then, I think with the WE grant, that you would finance that at market rate through EFC versus like a hardship. I mean, that's the other goal here, is to position a project that scores high, that puts you above what's called a subsidy line in this intended use plan that puts you in a position to get zero percent loan. A zero percent loan for a project of this magnitude in the ten to fifteen million dollar range is probably the equivalent of a two to three million dollar grant. So what EFC has been doing is they've been putting more money in the WE and the IMGs, and then taking away the zero percent hardship loan. So they've changed that up. But certainly, certainly the goal is to get that grant and then get the best long-term loan rate that you can, be it through EFC or local financing.
You have two phases, and if I attribute correctly, the first phase was nine point five million, the second was eight point two million. So your total is, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nine. Would you be able to funding available grants in each of those phases? Or do they look at only one phase, or are they looking at the whole project phase one?
Well, they'd probably do both, if there's, if there's some separation between the two. Again, the town is moving forward with phase one, just by virtue of the critical nature of these clarifiers and this kind of thing. Ideally, the agencies, I think, wanna fund one project. That would make the most sense, and I think by doing that, you're eligible for a higher margin, you know, be it twenty-five percent or forty percent of your net project cost. So you, we would typically discuss that with the funding agency that'd be EFC up front, but I think overall, you're looking for one project to be listed, capped.
So if the, if the town's already moving forward with phase one, and you wanna start building next year, how does the village, and if it was decided after this study that the village is, you're gonna do a joint of single sewage treatment plant? So how does, don't you have, once your phase one change now to make sure you accommodate the village?
No, because those secondary, those larger secondary clarifiers are, are sized to handle that.
You showed three of them, so you're saying three of them should be enough to accommodate both the village and the town? And then you had this, you know, this fourth one that was very light, and you weren't sure whether you were gonna need a fourth one.
For the town's project, it's, it's three clarifiers. So really, we haven't looked hard at what the village flows were. The thought is that that fourth clarifier would accommodate that additional flow coming from the, coming from the village.
Those clarifiers are sized to handle a peak.
But maybe not, is that what you're saying?
No, it's certainly the long-term, so in short-term, could they handle it? Possibly, but if there's all the other components, it wouldn't happen, wouldn't handle that. So for the, we haven't looked at, we haven't done the study yet, so we don't know how much clarification is necessarily needed. You know, one thing is the village flows.
But if you needed to, if you needed to build a fourth one, that would get built somewhere down the road? Like while you're doing phase two for the town?
Probably, if this project was to come, that would be, you know, providing the necessary additional clarification. Most of the clarifications are with phase one project, providing that additional clarification stage, which we, you know, we believe that fourth clarifier is gonna, is gonna handle it. Part of what Ken talked about is peak flows. So one thing, you know, part of this project is looking at what those, so with taking, converting the town into a pump station, the town's, the village's plan, I'm sorry, into a pump station, you got the ability to attenuate some of the peak flows. So that's a lot, that's...
Off course there by gravity now, why would you have to turn it into a pump station?
Well, it's, it'd be some way to kind of equalize those flows. So right now, the average flow, I think, the projected flow is two point one on average, and then seven point one peak hours flow. That's, you know, that's quite a bit of a... That's, you know, that's quite a bit of a jump in that one. So that additional volume just kind of helps bleed it in a little bit slower. It's still coming, it's not like it's going to be an average flow, but certainly that 7.1, you know, maybe you can turn that into five or something like that, so.
Where would the storage be if it's bleeding it in slower?
We haven't looked at that. I mean, that's just our thought is there's, you know, you got the ability, there's enough tankage in there that you could probably, you know, so maybe pump station where you got the ability to kind of control the levels versus just like, you know, having a fixed level where everything's kind of flowing in. Those are, that's the next stage of, you know.
So the suggestion would be the village plant is maintained for storage capacity during high flows?
Our thought is that, that's something we want to look at. Whether or not it works, I can't, I mean, we can't tell you.
If there's a, if inflow and infiltration is prevalent during wet weather, the DEC is typically not going to allow you to build a fourth clarifier for two or three million bucks. They're going to ask you to go out into the system and address it at the source. So it's going to be a combination of sewer rehab and INI reduction on parallel with your plant upgrades.
We're relatively low on INI, we go through every, every year.
As is, as is the town.
Yeah, no, I know. We talked a bit more about some of the upgrades in the maintenance and state.
Just want to reiterate a minute. When the plant operator, Dave Cullen, calls me on the phone and says I have another notice of violation from the DEC, it's very disturbing to the town board that we're getting these things. And then when I ask them why, you know, we start, wow, somebody dumped something in the village, or they're taking a lot of chamberlain trucks today, or they took some weed chade and the numbers went up, and we start pointing fingers. We cannot continue to do that.
I never felt that we pointed fingers. We're cooperatively at trying to.
Jake, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know.
We're in a room going, who did what?
Yeah, because it's, we have combined, combined interest in.
But the town is the one that's going to get fined.
And I think there's a mechanism in the IMA to.
That we didn't go back on you, yes.
Right.
Yes.
The town's not the only one with a liability on that, the village, and, you know, we have a responsibility and I think, you know, we've always worked great with Dave and everybody now at the plant, working together to try to find solutions. But the first, the first course of action is to identify the source of it and the issue to make sure we work together on it.
I agree with you Jake, but the DEC isn't going to pull your permit, they're going to pull the town's.
Clem, I guess I would ask you then, in terms of some of the issues that are being brought up, the renovations and the rehabilitation and the upgrades to the plant that you had suggested, are those things that would tend to reduce the concern from the village's point in terms of things like phosphorus and ammonia and that kind of overloading and such?
I mean, those are definitely things that were looked at during the, during the study. I don't know if there were specific ammonia exceedances that we looked at from the facility. So it was kind of looking at what data we had and what was being addressed. I know there were other issues that kind of came to the fore like, you know, increases in BOD and what we were taking into the total spend and so on, but, you know, right now the village has a ferric chloride system that helps to reduce the phosphorus levels. So it is actively, you know, working on some of those issues in those facilities. In our study, you know, we would look at improving those, but it wasn't necessarily that there was a particular drive to any improvements, not that I was aware of.
Jake, do you know what the music stuff?
I was just wondering. I was wondering if it was just a.
He's in the closet singing. Obviously, you know, the studies, we have to talk about, we have to do the study. I mean, we have an obligation to see the short-term is for the village residents, the long-term, you know, it's not just the immediate. Obviously, you're not going to see, when we're talking 20% growth or more in the town, I can't believe you're going to see that, we don't have that. There's no room, I'm sure, here. It's just going to look at it, you know, now and long-term and how it affects residents here.
Or would be your course of action in terms of progressing with this study? Or? Or would be your course of action in terms of progressing with this study?
Well, if the two boards were to come to a consensus that you want to move forward, we would draft a scope and fee. I'm assuming that the village engineer would also put one of those together. It would certainly be coordinated and they would come to the two boards and then if those were authorized, we would move ahead.
So Grant, you were saying the town was willing to share the cuts. Is the share, are you contemplating 50/50?
I wasn't contemplating anything like that, Tom. I was just looking at, we'll talk about it. We're willing to put money in the pot, okay, however it works out.
Okay.
This is a discussion for the board, the board.
If there was a consolidation, what would happen to the dedicated plant operators that are currently there? Would they be absorbed into the overall or would they be?
There's not enough plant operators. There's not enough plant operators, we got to keep them all.
That makes sense, certainly that they have anything moving forward and that kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a big part of it.
They would have to be, we got people retiring all the time and sort of you and, you know, there's not enough of them out there. The county wants to take a lot, everyone we got in it right now.
And vice versa.
So.
provided, if you have a discussion again with Clem. Certainly, we would now consider whatever the cost, and I do have to have, I do have another question. In order to apply for the grant, you would need to have an IMA in place. The study, you do not. The study would be in fact something that you might begin to initiate conversation regarding an IMA. That's right. Can I put me that or not?
Well, again.
Hand rod and IMA, with the study, looking at the study, then I see what the hand rod and IMA.
Yeah, the, the study serves as the basis for what your IMA is structured on. Again, to get a grant for your study, you're applying for that in July, you know, by May to July of 2018.
I think I do a simple standalone IMA, like saying the town pays 90% of the study and the village would pay 10%.
Or the other way around.
But a standalone IMA for just the study itself.
I would usually cut the straight face for that one.
That's between the two of you. Again, that could be a quick memorandum of understanding that each, each board reviews and approves and the mayor and the supervisor sign. You know, that just bounds. We'll, we'll send a bill to the town and then the agreement between the town and the village is separate.
Was it only the ING grant that required the IMA in place? The other grants don't?
You're contemplating a plan for a grant to pay for the study?
No.
Because that's going to take forever.
No.
It's not going to take much time.
No.
Right. I believe that the, that the cost of the study would be shared between us, we would move forward with that and then prepare for the grant application. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it. We're forward to hearing back from you. Thank you.
So your total is, you know, 17, 18 million. Would you kind of put different resources in?
I can add your attention. We are going to be moving on with village business, so if you would, please. We're moving to number four, update on depot wood and parks and recreation survey, so that Mr. Elder does not have to stay through the entire proceedings, but it won't take very long after that.
He said 10 minutes, I'm not starting the clock now.
Okay, well, I, um, first question I, the first thing I wanted to ask to you about is the survey for the parks. I have been inefficient in getting that distributed, so I wanted to see if the board would allow me to have till January 31st to finish up the whole village. It is a slow process for me to walk all the streets myself and, so if you could be kind of, do be kind enough to, now, I did, I do have two names of people that I contacted to see if they'd be on the parks committee. I'm hoping they come next week because we're planning that meeting at 6:30 and that'll give me some additional feet to pass it out, but we're distributing this by hand, so it does take time. And it was a bad time of the year for me, I'll be quite honest with you, I probably shouldn't have committed to doing it in three weeks in, in October.
I, I have an objection to that.
Okay.
We're tired guys right there.
Well, I have more, I have more greeting letters for you, they're, they're ready, so I'll be close to you by next week, so. There's another, I think another 12 people that we, that I found, so, or 12 households. We're going to, we're going to try to do it by household now, not by person as far as the envelope goes, because I know the last time I individually labeled the welcome letters, we're going to try to make that a little more efficient, so. All right, so generally, you're okay with that, so I will proceed. I have, what I'll do is I'll sticker over the part that says return it to the village by December 2nd and get the rest of them out. The second thing about the depot wood is Carl did meet about that and we are looking to move forward. I think our overall position with the wood at this point is we're having a very hard time finding a suitable location. What we may do is seed the, as you're probably aware, the original depot is about, I don't know, two-thirds to one-half the size of the wood we actually, actually have for the, what was pulled down. So we may end up using some of that wood to sell off, to get some funds to seed, getting the, something that's somewhere else to build the project. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at now. We have to find inventive ways of getting that structure put up. And of course, the key here is the structure we're putting up will be more of the original structure that was actually there in, what Carl, 18?
1870.
Okay, yeah. So I just wanted to give you update on that.
I also have more information about that. I don't know who gets it delivered in the article, but in Sunday's supplement, let's say, magazine, oh, inside register, I think, and there's an article about a lady that makes these fascinating things out of only barn wood. And so I don't know if she knows about our stuff, but I cut that article out. And I'm going to call her and see what she, see if she may be interested.
I just wanted to assure you they were still working on it and, so we're, we're going to continue to work on getting that, that located. Oh, I was going to mention, we did go down and inspect the wood and it is in great shape. Even the wood that's outside has not, which is much larger, heavier pieces, have withstood the elements pretty well under the tarps. The wood that's in the barns is pretty much as it is when we put it in there. I have pictures of Bill Ross standing on top of the eight-foot pile grabbing wood from us and, you know, he's what, you know, that's pretty amazing. And it's the same, it's the same exact condition as it was that day, so not having a problem about that.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
You did take a look at, you told me about him.
I did.
And he was not.
Yeah, it was Joe Orneal's brother. And he came and.
Quite aware of the power though.
He's way out there. Okay, it's Kennedy growing out there, but was very interested in the wood. And I told him that if you're going to buy the wood, you got to take it all because we're not going to just select pieces out of there and that would be a big concern. He said he would contemplate what he's going to do with that. And his original idea was to build, to rebuild the original 50 by, well, 60 by 30 structure, the original building, on his property and put his Christmas trees in there, so. And so I have not heard back from him, but maybe Joe can give him a little jab and see what happens.
It's a real busy time right now with Christmas trees.
There wasn't a cost that we spoke about, but we never uncovered the price. Might be attractive.
And, and we do appreciate the, the village's patience and with the wood down there. Because I realize there's not this massive demand for the outbuildings, but still we appreciate your keeping us, um, you know, keeping it, allowing us to keep the wood in there.
Will be enough to cover our study?
No.
Yeah.
No, long. Well, unless it's in, unless the ninety percent, ten percent share goes through, then, yeah, then yeah, so it would.
Could loan it.
Uh, next item is a resolution to fund the application of the Restore New York application. This was talked about last night. If you were here. If not, you received information vote from that. And I would just give you an update for those who were not here for the public hearing that are in the audience yesterday. We discussed a number of properties, about forty-four thousand square feet of, um, property, actually. And talked about the fact that there is a grant that is available in Restore New York. And it is a funding of, I believe, nine, ninety cents on a dollar. So if the applicant were to, for example, apply for something like six hundred thousand dollars, they would receive out of that five hundred and forty thousand, I guess, and they would be on the, for sixty thousand Friday. And that would go a long ways. I think Matt made a very, very good point because what happens then is that the owner, in terms of investing that money, can look down the road at, you know, instead of trying to recoup six hundred thousand dollars, he's only trying to recoup maybe sixty thousand that he's put into it. That reduces the rent and that would be more conducive to having people come in and actually set up a store there. So I think he made a good point on that. So at this time, I would like to read this resolution. It is a resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to approve the application for the Restore New York funding. And this is not a special meeting. I would say that at the regular scheduled workshop of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County held at the Community Meeting Hall, twenty-nine South Avenue in the Village of Webster, New York, on the fifth day of December two thousand and seventeen, there were present myself, trustee Val Kane, trustee Apolito, and trustee Lauer. Who is not here tonight. The following resolution is offered for adoption. Whereas the Village of Webster previously submitted an intent to apply for Restore New York funding for the revitalization of three properties within the Village of Webster. And whereas the properties sought to be revitalized with Restore New York funding are twenty-two to forty-two East Main Street, owned by North Forty-Three and Fifty-Eighth East Main Street, owned by the SPEBSQSA, and fifteen to twenty-one East Main Street, owned by Luigi Santanastaso. And whereas the owners of the properties have committed in writing to provide ten percent of the cost of rehabilitation projects to be used as the Village of Webster's funding match. And whereas by resolution dated November third, two thousand and seventeen, the Village Board of the Village of Webster established a date, time, place for a public hearing to be con, to consider the Restore New York funding application. And whereas a notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Record for three consecutive days and also in the Webster hearing. And whereas a public hearing was held by the Webster Village Board of Trustees on December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and whereas all interested persons were heard, and whereas this action is a type-two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, specifically is a type-two action pursuant to six NYCRR, section six, seventeen point five, C two and twenty-one. And whereas is a type-two action and is not subject to review under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and is deemed not to have a significant impact on the environment and is otherwise precluded from environmental review. Now therefore, be it resolved that the proposed rehabilitation projects set forth in the Restore New York application are consistent with the Village of Webster comprehensive plan. Proposed financing for the Restore New York project set forth in the application are appropriate for these projects. The rehabilitation projects facilitate the effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources. And the proposed rehabilitation projects set forth in the application develop and enhances infrastructure and/or facilities within the Village of Webster in a manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities within the Village of Webster. The Restore New York application is approved and the village treasurer is authorized to pay from general funds of the Village of Webster a five hundred dollar application fee. I undertake a motion to accept this match to the resolution.
Oh, I did motion.
Al?
I'll sign it.
Trustee Val Kane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Monk Mckenna?
I wanna be on record. All right. Uh, we will not know until, I think it's, um, lunch. So the application goes in.
Yeah.
And then they will make an allocation should we, uh, be lucky enough this time to receive. Hopefully we do. And that will add greatly, I think, to the development on East Main Street, which is very, very necessary. Okay, final item is a discussion for the pricing of new frames to match previous official mayoral frames.
Do you really have to have a discussion?
Uh-huh. I don't think so, but maybe. I don't know. Maybe they should be a little larger now or should they be like what they are?
I think they should.
What kind of backdrop?
They're big. Look at that one back there.
They should be colored now.
Color?
Well, we were fortunate to be able to find the matching frames to the ones from up there.
All right.
We did.
The, um, the art stop that used to be at the Four Corners are now in the Four Corners of Penfield. Same owners. Um, they didn't think they were gonna be able to do it, but they found the exact frame. Currently, there are two prior mayors who we have not framed with the, the matching frame.
Who's that?
Well, one of them's here. No, Jake's, Jake's this down because he's the example I took to pride a match. So.
Example.
He's the example.
I never doubted it. Never.
But for Peter elders.
He might have got a picture.
There you go.
That took a while, but.
Yeah, now you take it down.
I think he's right. It will be better.
Oh, boy.
So they would reframe, um, Peter elders and frame John Cahill's, um, in the existing frame. For the two of those would be two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
All right. We can only do, we can only do one then. Just have to do Peter's.
Well, this is, and this is what I found also.
Cross the street to Paparigio.
So you do Peter's this year and John's next year.
If you go to the Dollar Store, they have.
I could probably go somewhere else and buy all new frames for every photograph for, for less than.
And use the old ones for the village attorney.
Uh, wouldn't that fill this whole section over?
Oh, it's how big it is.
They used to come and go. I think, Don, you've been in the office for a long time. That one.
He has.
You might be, you might be close to the record.
No.
No.
Jerry Barrett was village attorney for Brown.
And then Bob Berkowitz for almost twenty-five years.
Was he? I know Jerry.
Well, what, what is a, what is a big expense?
I think, I think that amounts to Jake's approval limit. Just have Jake sign off on it.
There you go. Well, there's more, there's more to that. It, um, because of the fact that they, it was very difficult to find those. And it may progressively get more and more difficult to get matching frames. I asked her to give us a quote on a total of six. So two would be used for the, the previous mayors, Peter and John, and four additional frames. They would have everything, they would have the matting cut for the picture and the dates below it. And they, and it's a special, uh, UV glass that they put on them to protect the photos. So with all six frames, which includes the two being reframed, it would come to six ninety-two thirty-six.
Wow.
Overall, a hundred dollars a frame.
That's like one day of Jake's pay, I think.
How much would it cost?
So, so entirely to you.
I'm taking the rest of the week off. Well, I think they're really nice.
And the extra four, if we got them, the extra four would be ready to go. So we wouldn't have to go back to them. We could, could place the photos and the dates in them ourselves. And then we would hang on.
So for two of them, it would be.
Two fifty-nine seventy-six.
Six of them is?
Six of them.
Six ninety-two thirty-six.
Twenty-eight is better.
A frame?
As you have been saying, I think you can get some frames that are chit or yed or whatever, just to get close to it, I, I think.
Same size.
Yeah, same size. People aren't gonna go, oh.
People aren't gonna be touching them, checking to see.
Well, I don't think the cost is for the frame. It's for the UV glass and the printing and the matting and. Paper on the back and all that stuff. So they're throwing labor costs in there.
Are the current ones?
I don't know.
That's up to them. Want them to match.
If you give me the frame, I'll frame it. I'll put the mat up in my picture.
I don't want to.
Well. If, if I, can I just add one thing, maybe just for a sec? I don't, I don't know if there's anything sacrosanct about the pictures themselves either. Because some of them are just the best shots that Ling could get. And then like Jake's is, Jack's is the best shot we could get a jacket outside of. So I mean, these are not like, the, the photos themselves are not necessarily representative of the mayor's term. They're just the best we could find that represent that mayor. So.
I want the glamour to go out.
Jake's is his campaign photo. That's the best we had. So I guess I, I'm just trying to get is there's not, the, the photos themselves are not like some sort of sacred thing. They're the best, they're the best we could find.
Right.
And besides that, they're all in black and white. So which is, which is fine, but I mean, they're, they're also kind of, you know, it's, I don't know. It just seems like an awful lot.
Yeah. How much fatiness of black and white can take on versus the color?
How long would it take to fade?
Yeah, but inside, no light, natural light in there.
It's gonna take a long time.
Yeah, it's up to you there.
It's good with black and white.
Well, as far, as far as the UV glass, it, it really is only going to reduce about ten dollars per frame.
Right.
To go with a regular glass.
So that's not supporting what you just said, Mr. Lauer. Only ten bucks for that, especially. Oh, you'd do it then.
Well, we'll play it up.
Their engineer's thinking, come on, let's get on with this. Penalty stuff so we can talk about.
I know, that stuff's expensive. It is expensive. You want it done.
You know, it looks like, uh, Jack's.
We're gonna quit being an engineer and go and make a frame.
Anyways.
I mean, we found a different one.
Why don't you get the two when you're worrying about the future? Which is, you know what I mean? So those.
Well, the prices were down though.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you got, where you know, the place was locked.
All right. All right. I'm just gonna put my head down when we do the bills next week and they say seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, just, hey, we're not doing that here tonight. That's a signature. We're not, it's ten two.
I mean, we, we can look for similar frames if you, this, this was solely in an attempt to match the existing frames on the wall, which they had a difficult time finding, but they did. If you don't have a preference that they match at that, then we certainly can look elsewhere and see what we can find.
Do you try, try him across the street or?
All, all I went with was who did the original ones.
Worth a walk. He's really cross the street.
Wonder how much it was for Jack's.
Those are feeling like.
Can we move on from that?
Sure. Okay, we have a price, one twenty-nine, or two fifty-nine for two, and six ninety-two, a hundred and fifteen each, for six. That would include the first two being matted?
Yeah. And the rest, we would get all of the madding with it already pre-cut, the same as both. And then we, ourselves could just put in the photos at that time.
Okay. Um, then we'll, uh, think about it, pay what, and it will be on the next agenda.
Thanks for researching.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
All right. Uh, next Village Board meeting is the fourteenth of December, followed by Board meeting on the twenty-eighth. I have a motion to adjourn. It is eight forty-six.
I make that one.
All in favor?
Aye.